Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting and Public Hearing. Today is Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. It is 2:31 in the afternoon. Would you all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Ingles, do we have certification for all the items on today's agenda?
We do, Madam Chair. There are five items on your agenda scheduled for some level of discussions. That's Items 2A, B, C, D, and Item 3A. None of those items required specialized notice, but they were all properly noticed under the open meetings laws, and you have jurisdiction to proceed on all five.
Thank you, Mr. Ingles. Do any commissioners have disclosures for any item on today's agenda?
I have none.
No, ma'am.
And I have none either. For everyone's information, Commissioner Teal is representing the county at Water Congress up in Steamboat. Is that right, Commissioner Teal?
Yes, ma'am.
So that's why he is appearing virtually for us. Thank you for that, George.
Not a problem.
The first item on today's agenda, number two, Land Use Meeting, is subdivision improvements. Chuck Smith for staff. Doesn't look like Chuck Smith. Looks like Eric Pavlenek.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I will be presenting the SIA IGA as well as the final plat application with my presentation. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Eric Pavlenek, representing Planning Services. The project before you is Solstice Filing 5. The project number is SB 2020-052. Shay Holmes is the owner of the property. As previously stated, as part of this presentation, I will also provide information on the subdivision improvements agreement, intergovernmental agreement, SIA IGA for this filing. Before I begin, I would like to hand out additional correspondence received since Friday. There are two email chains between the applicant and two residents in Sunshine Acres. The other is a letter from the Northwest Douglas County Chamber and Economic Development Corporation in support of the project.
Thank you, Eric.
So Commissioners, I've just been handed three stacks of papers separated by three separate exhibits. I'll label them before I hand them out, but they're Exhibits 1, 2, and 3 for today's public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Ingles.
The request is for approval of a final plat consisting of 221 single-family residential lots, four tracks, and associated public roads on approximately 72 acres within the Plum Creek PD. This is the last final plat within the development. The intent of the final plat process is to provide for the review of the final engineering plans, the subdivision improvement agreement, public dedications, and other legal agreements. The final plat process begins with the submission of an application, following a review period by referral agencies in the public, and final acceptance of all engineering plans. The request is considered by the board at a public meeting. Public comment was received from two property owners in Sunshine Acres. Public comment generally focused on buffers to existing properties, drainage impacts, construction activity, and pedestrian connections to the state park. The applicant provided a written response to all public and referral agency comments. This filing outlined in red is located in the southwest portion of the PD and is bounded by the High Line Canal to the east, Sunshine Acres to the south, Chatfield State Park to the west, and Solstice Filing 4 to the north. This is an aerial view of the property. The site was rezoned from Agriculture 1 to PD in October of 2016. The preliminary plan for the entire property was reviewed and approved by the board in December of 2017. Final plats for filings 1 through 4 were approved by the board between 2018 and 2020. Filing 5 is the last plat within the PD. This slide depicts the exhibit. The application proposes 221 single-family lots, four tracks, and public roads on 72 acres. Approximately 27 acres of the development is proposed as open space within the four tracks. All lots meet the minimum separation distances required by the PD. Access to this filing is provided by connection to Bright Sky Lane, a public road providing access to other portions of the development. This road was extended over the High Line Canal, approved with Solstice Filing 1. This is a view from the northern boundary of the property looking east. Model homes within filing 1 are visible in the photo. A view looking southwest from within proposed tract A, homes within Sunshine Acres are visible in this photo. This is also a view looking southwest from the southern tip of the plat boundary. And finally, a view from the western boundary of the property looking west. These are the approval standards applicable to a final plat. A detailed assessment of the project's compliance with all standards is included in the staff report. All engineering plans, studies, and reports have been reviewed and approved by engineering. Staff has evaluated the final plat request in accordance with Article 5. The final plat is consistent with the approved preliminary plan and the standards established within the PD. Required improvements are identified and secured through the SIA IGA for filing 5. Action on proposed condition number 1 is required prior to action on the final plat. Should the board find that the approval standards are met, the following proposed conditions should be considered for inclusion in the motion. Condition number 1, prior to the board's action on the final plat, the subdivision improvements agreement, intergovernmental agreement, SIA IGA for filing 5 shall be approved by the board. Condition number 2, priority recordation of the final plat, capital mitigation fees in the amount of $1,605 per lot shall be paid to the Douglas County School District in accordance with the Plum Creek PD statement of commitments. Condition number 3, tract K within Solstice Filing 1 should be dedicated to Douglas County prior to issuance of the 500th building permit within the Plum Creek PD. Condition number 4, prior to issuance of each residential building permit, the applicant shall provide payment to Douglas County for the pro rata share costs towards improvements to the state highway system in accordance with the statement, with the commitments set forth in the Plum Creek PD. Condition number 5, during construction activity within the development, the applicant and successor in the signs shall take all reasonable care to watch for historic resources, paleontological resources, and other cultural history resources, and shall immediately notify Douglas County in the event of such discovery. Condition number 6, priority recordation of the final plat, all technical corrections to the final plat exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. And condition number 7, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public meeting and are agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Section 504.06 of the subdivision resolution sets forth the parameters for the board's determination on final plat requests, as noted on this slide. The SIA IGA for Solstice Filing 5 is a three-party agreement, as noted on this slide. The purpose of the agreement is to provide for the completion of improvements associated with this filing, which are also noted on this slide. Two motions are necessary from the board. The first is a motion for the SIA IGA, followed by a second motion on the final plat. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to take any questions at this time. Otherwise, the applicant representative, Marcus Pacner, is here to present.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions for staff?
I have several questions, but I'll reserve those for the applicant's presentation. Thank you.
Commissioner Teal?
Thank you, ma'am. Eric, just wanted to get my count right. I had seven conditions on the motion to, the motion on the final plat.
Yes, Commissioner Teal.
Project File SB 2020-052.
Commissioner Teal, Eric Pavlenek for staff. That is correct. There are seven proposed conditions.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Pacner, sorry about that.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Commissioners, thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm honored to be here on behalf of Shay Holmes. I'm joined by Ryan McDermott, who's the Vice President of Forward Planning by Shay, and an entire project team that has been involved in this project since the inception. If you, Eric, could please go to the next slide, or am I going to be able to run things? There you go.
I'm sorry. Would you mind giving us your name and spelling your last name for the record?
Absolutely. Marcus Pacner, P-A-C-H-N-E-R, and my address is 130 Rampart Way, Denver, Colorado.
Thank you.
Again, you bet. Thank you very much. Commissioners, this is a snapshot of the last five years, actually, seven years that we have been working on this project. It gives you a very thorough analysis of the timeline and the remarkable commitment that the county and staff has done committed to this site. This shows we were originally approved just over, just under five years ago, the PD back in 2016. Probably to note as well is that filing 1 was approved back in 2018, so we have been ongoing construction for about the last three years, and that certainly shaped some of the community dialogue that is occurring today. But that shows you the snapshot. This next slide actually shows us the value that we have tried to entrench in the community around the site. This is such a special site and such a special existing community that we have known how important it has been to really do this. Our philosophy has been a concentric outreach philosophy where we have met most, with the most impacted neighbors, that most often hearing theirs, and really trying to plan the site from the outside in. As you can see, this is a list of the meetings that we have hosted over the last seven years. I think combined, this is 259 community meetings, with one as recent as this past Sunday. We have learned so much, and I will say this, it is nothing to be congratulated on our behalf. This has been really reflective of the community involvement, and our project is so much better off because of their contribution to this site as well. Next slide. When we did this, the very thing that we showed and illustrated here in the PD, this is an image that we have shown you all every time we have presented. The reason for that has been this philosophy that we needed to do outside-in planning, that we needed to reflect the buffers and transitions. I remember our original narrative. We said this was the missing piece of a puzzle because every other edge around us was already done. They were not going to change. Those were the edges. So we needed to blend into all of those existing edges, the three sides of the park that surround us, and then all of the existing neighborhood. So we worked very hard to do that. One thing I will note here, as we talk about filing 5 in this area here, this is our largest buffer from the existing community, 150 feet minimum. That has been done specifically for a very good reason, really, the view corridors and the connection to the state park that I will talk about. So this was our original view, and we certainly believe we have made this come to fruition. Next slide, please. Commissioners, this shows the previous four filings that have gone through. As you all know, this is a total of 1,100 lots. We have 221 here in filing 5, but the blue area shows filing 1, 2, 3, and 4. It has been interesting how this evolved. Filing 1 was here in the middle of the site, really to work on Roxborough Road, to establish the trunk infrastructure, the roadway infrastructure. Filing 2 had the completion of Chatfield Lake Road here, all the way down to Titan, to really establish that new connection point, and then filing 3 here and filing 4. The other thing that has really driven our construction and filing schedules has been the High Line Canal. Working with the High Line, working with all the interested groups in that, and really preserving that and making a linear park, and we have been going through that, as you can see, in three of the different filings. can see, in three of the different filings. Next slide, please. Thank you, Eric. This is actually some recent images, some drone footage that was taken in the last few months of the site. This is looking down on the High Line House, which is right here in this aerial. So this is Chatfield Lake Road. This is Roxborough Road coming into the site right here that now comes off a roundabout, and this is the southern access point to the park. That shows the amenity zone. The pool is now in place. That has been filled in and completed. There's a lot of activity here at the High Line House. Additionally, this view is actually looking back to the southeast. If you are in a drone above the High Line Canal, this shows the Brayley Acres neighborhood. This would be Sterling Ranch right here, Plum Creek, and this is Roxborough Road. This really shows you filing 1 and 2, why that infrastructure happened this way, filing 3 in process here, working with the Plum Creek and the Brayley Acre neighbors. One thing I will just say as a snapshot, because we get questions about this, how this has come to fruition, there are now 85 new families that have moved into the site, and we have had 236 net sales. So that is the number of families that are currently moving into Solstice. Next slide, please. This is filing 5. I will run through this. This is the 221 lots that Eric covered so thoroughly. The filing 5, one thing I will say, there certainly has been some discourse here with the Sunshine Acres neighborhood. This has always been such an important connection because of the High Line and this connection to the state park. This is actually the focal, the gathering place of this site where a lot of people make equestrian connection, particularly to Chatfield Park. Again, this is 73-plus acres in filing 5, and we have focused on one thing I'd like to point out here. The very truest agreement that we made with Sunshine Acres many, many years ago was three things. The largest buffer, the 150-foot minimum, that there would be no roadway connection into Sunshine Acres. Our original plan actually showed a roadway here from Sunshine Acres into, or from our site into their neighborhood. We took that off immediately when they said they would never support that. And then lastly, you all know this, every home here on the west side of the High Line is a one-story ranch-style home. We did that to preserve views, honor that historic view corridor, and really respect the transition to the state park. Next slide, please. This just shows our infrastructure improvements. You see the phasing. This road here, Bright Sky Lane, is already under construction and almost completed. The kind of color here, yellow, you can see phase 1, phase 2, phase 3, phase 4, and phase 5 within the filing. You see how we move basically from east to west as we kind of go to the west of the site to the Chatfield Edge. We are going to pay particular attention to this connection here to the Sunshine Acres neighborhood, and I'll point out a few things in just a few minutes. Next slide. Thank you. This is an image, Commissioners, that shows the parks dedications that have occurred in all five filings. Again, filing 5 here. This shows the track. I will note here in filing 5, this is a, probably has the smallest amount of dedication. Per the PD, we had 49 acres of parkland. We are surpassing that dedication on all five filings. What this really is, as you see, is this remarkable enhancement of the High Line Canal. It is the finest amenity that we have. What we have done here is work with so many different organizations to really expand a linear park and add that amenity, again, from the outside end, to really buffer to the homes and allow the existing users of the High Line to have that transition instead of having homes immediately against them. Next slide, please. This shows that Chatfield buffer, I guess we can call it the West buffer, the Chatfield buffer. This is something we've been wanting to talk about for a long time because it means we're at filing 5 here, but this really shows that transition to the pristine conditions of the park. Something I'd point out today is all of this area adjacent to Sunshine Acres, which is just south of this, has already been completed. So those important improvements are already in place with Tributary B here. You see a crusher fine trail that we are going to be making all the way around, a loop trail, if you will, around our site. And then we have come to an agreement that I specifically want to point out with Chatfield State Parks, that we will have an access point there that has actually been very important to the community, particularly for equestrian access directly to the park. Not all the equestrian users want to use the High Line in this area, so they would like to come out here, and there's an informal or voluntary trail that is about right here. So we've agreed how we'll make that connection, the fencing, the gates, all of those requirements with the state parks, and we will actually be making that connection here to the informal trail. So that has been a great improvement. I think Sunshine Acres has asked specifically to the state parks, and we have seconded that, perhaps to not allow bicycles to enter that entrance. That is under review and completely within the purview of the State Parks Department, but they would love to allow this to be more pedestrian and equestrian entrance. Next slide, please. Folks, this talks a little bit again about the High Line Canal. You've seen this image a lot, this kind of linear park. This is Solstice Park here. This is the High Line House. You can see really that ribbon of kind of recreation that runs throughout the site. You see two different images here that show, from the roadway bridges, that really show that experience that we're trying to create. I will show here in filing 5, we have a proposed play amenity, really this expansion that's part of the Parkway dedication in filing 5. We have worked really very hard to make this be the amenity that it should be. We are actually incredibly proud of how it has been, the growth that came in last year. We were blessed with a lot of moisture right when we planted, and so we are seeing a lot of growth here occur along the High Line and starting to see many of these amenities come into place. Next slide, please. This shows that overall trail map. This again shows kind of the vision that we've had. A couple of things I'd like to note is this equestrian entrance, again, going to the state park. We have been very happy to close this deal, which was many months ago, many years ago. We have successfully incorporated this connection. It used to be Tumbleweed Lane Road. We purchased that road. We have now dedicated it for equestrian use here, and it actually makes this connection here to the informal trail. So we were able to complete that full pedestrian and equestrian connection there on the site. Next slide, and final slide, I believe. Commissioners, I would like to just note, and you have been involved or seen some correspondence between us and the Sunshine Acres, two particular neighbors, but really with their association as well. I wanted to close on this slide, the commitments and good neighbors, because we created a voluntary agreement with the Sunshine Acres neighbors where they did not need to sign anything. We asked them if they wanted to. They said no. It should be a one-sided voluntary agreement, and we were more than happy to do that. We have done that specifically to address issues, construction issues, as it relates to their neighborhood. So we have put in place some further restrictions, some enhanced mitigation techniques on overlot grading, the reseeding, the procedures we're going to use, particularly hydro seeding, and then our requirements, continued requirements with CDPE. So I just want to note that on the record, Eric mentioned it earlier, we certainly will stand by that. That's why we entered it, so people would have that agreement. I wanted to put that up and then transition to these existing commitments. It has been honestly our pleasure to work with these neighbors all around this site, and I am pointing out here just a few of the things that they have suggested and we have worked with. We have created all the buffers to really plan from the outside in. We have dedicated now future right-of-way here, just on the west side of Roxborough, so that can become a paved road and be maintained, so there's a better access point to the neighborhood. The Jeffco Aero modelers inside the state park, that new runway is on a 45-degree angle that we helped them build and we paid for, so those homes, they can have that existing facility and it doesn't fly over the home. So that new 45-degree angle, we worked with them. Maybe the most important, we also, in the last six months, have reached an agreement to have an emergency interconnect between Chatfield South Water District and Centennial Water District in our district, so that there is always backflow and water connection if there's an emergency here for the existing neighborhood. I think just a couple others. The Tributary B realignment, as you all have studied, the work we have done here, that was to take existing floodwaters that came through this neighborhood, move them onto our site, and move that water instead of going through the neighborhoods. Lastly, you all have been very involved in this roadway connection from Titan and Roxborough. We think we have changed that. We have provided a new primary access point into the state park and are in the process of turning Roxborough much more into a neighborhood road. I say all of that just to say, we're going to honor our commitments to the Sunshine neighbors that we have made, these new enhanced mitigation practices. They have been great partners, and we're honored to put that document there so they know we will do that. So with all of that, I do want to say, we certainly understand the approval criteria. We accept all the conditions, and we'd respectfully request your support for this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pakner. Questions?
Well, Mr. Pakner, as always, you've done a phenomenal job with your presentation, and Shay Trudeform is coming forward with a development and an application that is certainly, I think, very respectful of the neighbors, and it reflects an ongoing commitment to interact well with those that we serve as county commissioners. Really pleased to see the different plans and the agreements that you have in place. I just had one question associated with some of the citizen comment associated with construction, you know, particular admissions and some of the construction standards. Can you go into some of the specifics associated with that voluntary agreement?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to, Commissioner Layden, and thank you very much for that question. If I could, Eric, I'm just going to use this map here to kind of talk about it. As you all know, Sunshine Acres here is really on the west side of the High Line, right? So this is the Sunshine Acres Association here, and so we have been working with them. They, as you know, as we have done filings 1, 2, 3, and 4 here, and the High Line Canal, I will just say that a lot of that impact centers on how Sunshine Acres enters the site or connects to the site. It has just been that. And Commissioner, I mentioned at the beginning, that three years of construction, a lot of that has kind of been the trunk infrastructure and the High Line here. So I think they have, in many ways, had to deal with that for a little bit longer period of time. I will say, when we did the Tributary B here in the High Line Canal, we were really battling some very, some weather conditions, some very dry conditions, and we used a reseeding method that frankly involved plowing and the weather, and they, there were some very dusty days, more than days. There was a time period that was very hard. At their suggestion, Commissioner, they have now, we put in place an agreement that deals specifically with the number of water trucks that will be on site for the overlot grading. Overlot grading has happened everywhere except here in filing 5. We are limiting the time period for when that overlot grading can occur to a period of time during the winter months, when those are optimal commission conditions. So reseeding, the next item we address, and that is the reseeding that occurs on those lots. We have agreed, these southern lots, there are 12 right there, and then three more here, and all of this area south of that, we're going to use a hydro seeding, so a water seeding method, so it doesn't create that event that I described earlier. So a water seeding method. I will mention, as I did in the agreement, we actually have to get permission from Douglas County to use that. That's a variance, a request to use hydro seeding instead of the regular method, and we will request that for those 15 lots there. We think that's a much better situation. Secondly, we put in weekly cleanups. Again, that kind of accumulate along the High Line and here, so we have those in place. And finally, some very specific things on the CDPE requirements. We have never had a violation. We're going to make sure that that continues. It's actually a very well-regulated site because these two neighbors have done a terrific job of keeping the CDPE involved, but all of those things, Commissioner, have come to rest in a voluntary neighborhood agreement that we have put forward.
Well, Mr. Pakner, thank you for that answer, and I think that satisfies the question that I had, and thank you again for just engaging so well with citizens on that level.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, ma'am. Actually, Commissioner Layden really asked the question I wanted to ask, Mr. Pakner, and I think that took care of my questions.
Great. Thank you.
So, Mr. Pakner, the only questions I have are about an emergency evacuation plan that you needed to develop for all of your residents. Is that correct? Can you just talk a little bit about that, so it's on the record?
Absolutely. Commissioner, that was something that came specifically with filing 4, if I remember correctly, and I know I'll be corrected if I'm not. That was something that really looked at the flood pool, the basin to the north of us with Chatfield, something we went through with all the federal agencies and state agencies. As part of the requirement and approvals of filing 4, we put in place an emergency evacuation law, a plan for that. Commissioner, that is a very detailed plan. It has different elevations as the flood pool fills. If there is a flood event, when evacuations will occur. We have approved, that plan has been approved. We have also, our HOA and everyone involved here is well aware of that. That's a posted document that they have as well. As you can imagine, filing 4, there are more homes that are kind of involved in that, if you will, and there are a few homes here in filing 5, but Commissioner, that is in place and actively working for the community.
And that question probably comes from, I think I'm the only commissioner now who was here when you, we first approved this, and that was the topic of a lot of discussion in that meeting, and so that's why when I read this, it piqued my interest, and I asked you to put that on the record.
Absolutely.
So thank you for doing that. If there's no other questions, I'm going to open this up for citizen comment. Okay, I'll open this up for citizen comment. Are there any citizens here who would like to address the Board on this topic? Seeing no one come forward in the hearing room, Troy, is there anyone online?
I do have one online. That would be Ryan Patterson. And Ryan, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Mr. Patterson, if you could give us your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
Yes, Ryan Patterson, P-A-T-T-E-R-S-O-N, 6494 West Lakeside Court. I had one question. First, I enjoyed the presentation. It was very informative. One question I had is the trails throughout the community, are those going to be open to the public, or will they be neighborhood-only, similar to that country where only residents are allowed on the trails?
So after citizen comment is complete, we can have the applicant answer those questions for you. Did you have anything else?
Okay. My other comment was, I appreciate all the things that are being done here, but my concern about what's not being done is just a general concern about infrastructure. 1,100 more, how, well, it's not, I mean, it's a total development of 1,100 houses, but that's all, Titan Road is taking the full burden of those extra residences, along with on the housing being developed in Sterling Ranch, south of Titan, as well as east of Rampart Range. And my concern is just that the overpass, as well as Titan, wasn't designed for that traffic load. The exit off of Highway 85 to Titan is often backed up. I'm concerned that the infrastructure, as much thought is being put into the community itself, which is clearly a huge amount of thought, I'm worried about the infrastructure of supporting these communities, as well as the fact that there's no commercial development going in, so all of these people are going in and out for groceries to Roxborough, Highland Ranch, for appointments, gas, et cetera. It'd be great to see more commercial infrastructure going into this area, or otherwise, support via better roadway arteries to support these neighborhoods, and that's all the comment that I had at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. After citizen comment is complete, you'll hear some answers to your questions.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Troy, anyone else?
That is all the online comment.
Thank you. I'll be closing citizen comment then, if the applicant would like to come forward and answer the question about your parks.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. I would be happy to address that if Eric doesn't mind going back two slides to the trail map, the first half of that, there it is, sorry. All of these trails are open to the public. They were actually designed, in many ways, because of the existing users that are on the site. So these are open to everyone. They are certainly not reserved to Solstice community members, and actually, something the Park State Department said to us last week was, that shall forever not just be a Solstice connection there to the state park, that should be all the surrounding neighbors. So yes, we welcome that. I will say, as it, overall infrastructure, I'll give full credit to the county. That has been a very long discussed item, and in our PD and the preliminary plan, there were specific dedications and feeds, fees for roadway improvements on Titan and Highway 85 in the interchange. So that is actually something that has been done incrementally that reflects the number of homes and number of vehicles that we would look at. I would also talk about the improvements to Roxborough Road, that signal, which is such a safer passage now. All of that was part of the forward planning that came out of the long-term planning for the site. So we believe those are fully involved in this planning process and have been contributing to those throughout this, through the last five years on this site.
Thank you, and I'm just going to reiterate on the record that you have stated that you agree with all seven of the conditions.
Yes, we do.
Thank you, Mr. Pakner. Eric, is there anyone from staff who would like to address further the infrastructure question? We heard concerns about Titan not being built for this number of vehicles.
Commissioner Thomas, while we're waiting for that, just for purposes of the record, the three exhibits that were given to the Board that is here in the meeting were also emailed to Commissioner Teal, so he has access to those as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ingalls.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chuck Smith with Engineering. Mr. Pakner was talking about is that, you know, with Sterling Ranch and Solstice have been contributing monies for these offside improvements. So Titan Road is being improved, as far as they're constructing Waterton, and all that's going to hook up with the southern connector with going to hook up with the southern connector with Moore Road and things. So there's a lot of avenues there to get people in and out of there more safely. As far as the Titan Road bridge improvements, you know, that's more of a CDOT thing. But again, the money that they're contributing also goes towards that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any more discussion? Commissioner Layden?
You know, I don't have any additional discussion, other than to say that, you know, in my review of the packet, and specifically the legal criteria for this particular application, I believe that all of the elements of 503.01 at SEC have been satisfied, and certainly the questions that we've received from the public and here today have been well answered by the applicant. So I will be in favor.
Thank you. Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, ma'am. I just want to reinforce what we heard from the county attorney just a moment ago. I did receive those exhibits. They were emailed to me, and I don't know if anybody noticed me trying to read them on my phone, but they have been read, and the input is very much appreciated.
Thank you. I'll take motions, starting with one for the SIA-IGA.
So I'll make a motion to approve a subdivision improvements agreement, an intergovernmental agreement for Solstice filing number 5, Douglas County Project File DV 2020-318.
Second.
There's a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 That motion carries.
Madam Chair, please, the board, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Solstice filing 5, final plat, with seven conditions as presented, project file SB 2020-052.
Second.
There's a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, and that motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 2C. Again, this is a paired applica, a paired, two topics, the SIA-IGA and Sterling Ranch filing 6A. Brett Thomas for staff.
Brett Thomas, representing Planning Services. Before I begin, I'd like to hand out correspondence received today. The first is an email from Northwest Douglas County Chamber and EDC in support of the application. Second is an email with questions from Ann Schefflin, a resident of Plum Valley Heights. The project before you is Sterling Ranch filing 6A, final plat, project number SB 2021-020. Eric Barney with Sterling Ranch and Brian Hart with Redland are project representatives on behalf of the owner, Sterling Ranch LLC. As part of this presentation, staff will also provide information on the subdivision improvements agreement, intergovernmental agreement for filing 6A. The applicant proposes 228 residential lots, four super block lots, 12 tracks, and associated public and private roads on 88.75 acres. The intent of the final plat process is to provide for the review of final engineering plans, subdivision improvement agreement, public dedications, and other legal agreements. Final plat process begins with submission of an application. Following a review period by referral agencies in the public, and acceptance of engineered plans, the request is considered by the board at a public meeting. Public comments were generally focused on water supply and wastewater. The Plum Valley Heights HOA expressed concern with traffic impacts to Moore Road, Building Heights, and the Sterling Gulch Wildlife Corridor. The applicant response letter to referral comments is included in the staff report. Site is located in the southeast portion of Sterling Ranch PD, approximately 1,700 feet west of the intersection of Waterton Road and Moore Road. This is an aerial of the property. The site is bound by Sterling Ranch 4B to the north, filing 5A to the west, and large lot residential in Plum Valley Heights to the south. Undeveloped portions of Sterling Ranch within Preliminary Plan 6 are located to the east. The site was rezoned to planned development with approval of the Sterling Ranch PD by the Board of County Commissioners in 2013. Associated with approval of the Sterling Ranch PD, the board also approved the Sterling Ranch Water Supply Standards Appeal for certain provisions to Section 18A of the zoning resolution. The appeal established alternate minimum water demand standards and alternate water supply documentation standards for the Sterling Ranch PD. In June of 2021, the board reviewed and approved Preliminary Plan 6, consisting of 700 residential lots, six super block lots, 51 tracks, and associated public roads and private drives, of which this site is a part. Filing 6A is the first of three final plats proposed within Preliminary Plan 6. This slide is an overview of the final plat exhibit. The applicant proposes 228 residential lots, 12 tracks, and four super block lots for future development. The super block lots are located north of the residential lots, along the proposed Waterton Road extension. This is a view looking south into filing 6A from the future intersection of Waterton Road and Eagle River Street. Homes located within Plum Valley Heights are visible in the distance. These are the approval standards applicable to a final plat. In addition, the water appeal approval standards apply to this section. A detailed assessment of the project's compliance with all standards is included in the staff report. All engineered plans, studies, and reports required for filing 6A have been reviewed and approved by engineering. Staff has evaluated the final plat request in accordance with Article 5 of the subdivision resolution. Required improvements are identified and secured through the SIA-IGA for filing 6A. Action on proposed condition number 1 is required prior to action on the final plat. Condition number 1, prior to the board's action on the final plat, subdivision improvements agreement, intergovernmental agreement for filing 6A shall be approved by the board. Condition number 2, prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall provide payment in the amount of $1,500 per single-family dwelling unit to the Douglas County School District for capital mitigation. For multifamily dwelling units within the final plat, the applicant shall provide payment in the amount of $750 per unit to the Douglas County School District for capital mitigation prior to site improvement plan approval. Condition number 3, prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall provide payment to Douglas County for the pro-rata share cost towards improvements to the state highway system in accordance with commitments set forth in Sterling Ranch PD. Condition number 4, prior to recordation of the final plat, the property within filing 6A shall be included into one or more of the Sterling Ranch Metropolitan Districts. Condition number 5, prior to recordation of the final plat, the private telecommunication easements shall be recorded and reception numbers noted on the final plat exhibit. Condition number 6, Colorado Division of Wildlife Literature shall be made available to both prospective homeowners and homebuyers concerning possible presence of wildlife, and shall be available at all times. Condition number 7, a burrowie and owl survey shall be performed if any earth movement will begin between March 15th and October 31st. Condition number 8, prior to recordation of the final plat, technical corrections to the final plat exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. And condition number 9, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public meeting, and/or agreed to in writing, and included in the public record, have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Section 504.06 of the subdivision resolution sets forth the parameters for the board's determination on final plat request, as noted on this slide. The subdivision improvements agreement and intergovernmental agreement that accompanies the final plat is a four-party agreement between the county, Sterling Ranch Development Company, Sterling Ranch Community Authority Board, and the Dominion Water and Sanitation District. The purpose of the SIA-IGA for Sterling Ranch filing number 6A is to provide for the completion of streets, traffic facilities, sidewalks, storm drainage infrastructure, water infrastructure, sanitary infrastructure, and off-site improvements. Brad Jackson with Engineering is available if you have specific questions regarding the agreement. This concludes the presentation on the final plat for Sterling Ranch filing 6A and the SIA-IGA. Two motions are necessary from the board. The first motion would be made for the SIA-IGA, followed by a second motion on the final plat. Staffs available to take questions at this time. Otherwise, Sterling Ranch and its representatives are here to discuss the request.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Questions for staff?
I'll reserve my questions following the applicant's presentation.
Commissioner Teal.
No questions.
Brett, I have one question. On page 191 of the packet, it talks about engineering indicates that only minor technical changes to the construction plans remain, and that final approval of all report studies and plans will be accomplished prior to today's meeting. Has that been completed?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brad Jackson, representing Engineering Services. The engineering documents, plans, reports have been signed by engineering at this time, so that's been accomplished.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. If there's no other questions from Commissioners, the applicant can come forward.
And Madam Chair, while we're waiting, Exhibits 4 and 5 have been tendered to the board who are present, as well as emailed to Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Mr. Ingles. And if you could start with your name, spell your last name and your address, please.
I'd like to clarify one thing. They had me down as Sterling Ranch LLC. I am on behalf of Sterling Ranch Development Company. I am Eric Barney, last name Barney, B-A-R-N-E-Y, at 8155 Piney River Avenue, Suite 200, Littleton, Colorado, 80125. First, I'd like to thank you for having us today. I'd also like to thank Douglas County Planning Staff and Douglas County Engineering for their professionalism and their hard work on this application. We have quite a few Sterling Ranch representatives here today. We have Brock Smithles, President of Sterling Ranch, Eric Barney, myself, Director of Engineering, Susan Beckman, our Entitlement Director. We also have Andrea Cole, Manager of Dominion Water and Sanitation District here, Denise Hoganis, General Manager at the Sterling Ranch Community Authority Board, Brian Hart, Associate Principal with Redland, a design engineer, and also Cassie Slate is online. She is our Transportation Engineer, and Curtis Davison, our Landscape Architect, is Just to get your bearings straight, again, to the west, you can see we have Roxborough State Park, Arrowhead Golf Club, the Golf Club at Ravenna, and Lockheed Martin Campus. To the north of Titan Road is Solstice, and to the east, about one mile, is Santa Fe. Just want to point out also that Sterling Ranch was the number-one master, selling master plan community last year in the metro area, and it appears we will be again this The Douglas County process, a final plat application is processed pursuant to Article 5 of the subdivision resolution. Article 5 states the intent of the process is to provide for the review of final engineering plans, the subdivision improvement agreement, public dedications, and legal agreements, just as Brett stated. Filing 6A final plat complies with Douglas County Subdivision Resolution 503.01 and the 2040 Comprehensive Master Plan. The proposed urban development is designated urban areas and is located within the Chatfield Urban Area, also provides for adequate regional trails, equestrian trails, wildlife corridors, and significant open space. Just in general, for Sterling Ranch, just want to go over a couple of things here. The Sterling Ranch Plan Development was approved in 2013. Since that time, the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners has approved six preliminary plans, nine final plats, and 15 plat amendments. The full build-out will take approximately 20 years. Preliminary Plan 6 was approved by the BOCC on June 29th of this year. Just a quick overview, 245.57 acres, as outlined in red. I hope this does work. 444 single-family detached residence, six super, six super block lots for future residential or commercial development. Getting into the details of 6A final plat, this plat outlined in red, it's the first plat in Preliminary Plan 6, totals 88.745 acres. We have 228 residential lots, 50 single-family duplex lots, and four super blocks for residential, multifamily, or commercial development. Here's an exhibit of the final plat. Again, this shows the 228 residential lots. Sterling Ranch filing 6A will be served by the Sterling Ranch Community Authority Board for potable water and wastewater, and the Dominion Water and Sanitation District is the wholesale water and sewer provider. Water delivery and supply was approved with Preliminary Plan 6 at the June 29th BOCC This is a picture of our approved neighborhood plan for filing 6A. The neighborhood plan shows the character zones that are established for the filing 6A final plat outlined in blue. The character zones set the development standards such as lot size and building height. All the minimum lot sizes and building height requirements for each character zone have been met. I also like to point out that in Preliminary Plan 6, Special Character Zone A overlay, which establishes that lots adjacent to Plum Valley Heights that need to be minimum of 2.3 acres. It's right here in C2, those are 2.3 acre lots for a buffer to Plum Valley Heights, and limits those perimeter lots to one-story in height. The Special Character Zone A also requires a C1, this green area right here, multi-functional open space buffer along the west side of Plum Valley Heights. Parks and open space, the final plat 6A conforms with Approval Criteria 403.02. Approximately 32 acres of future parks and open space are in filing 6A. Park space, there are two dedicated park spaces in filing 6A, tracks B and D. Those are outlined in green here and here. Those total approximately four acres. There's also approximately 10.59 acres of multi-functional open space and 20.95 acres of open preserve, open space in filing 6A. Now, I want to talk a little bit about conductivity. You can see on this map, Moore Road on the east, we got Rampart on the west, and we've got the future Waterton Road that bisects Preliminary Plan 6. What I'd like to point out is Waterton Road, the design has been completed by both Sterling Ranch and Douglas County at this time. Going a little more detail, picture that we got here, I want to point out that Sterling Ranch Community Authority Board has completed the majority of the grading and major drainage way crossings of Waterton Road. Oops. So you can see, coming through here, you can see the grading of Waterton Road. This is the Waterton Pond, which takes a lot of drainage. Here is preliminary, or excuse me, 6A, those sites here, and I've got a couple more close-ups of those. So this is looking from filing 4B to the south. This is the Waterton Pond for drainage that I was alluding to earlier. This is the residential portion of 6A, and there are two super blocks north of Waterton Another picture, looking at the homes in filing 4B, again, you can see, oh gosh, why do I keep doing that? You can see Waterton Road in the background, the grading for that. You can see this green area here is 6A. This is a super block, and this is a super block for 6A. And just to wrap up all these slides, the anticipated completion of Waterton Road, which the county, as you guys are aware of, is working on, is anticipated in the next 12 to 18 months, which will be great. Again, you've got Waterton Road coming through here, filing 6A here, got Moore Road, got Rampart Range Road. We meet all the approval criteria set forth in Douglas County Subdivision Resolution, Section 503. We have highlighted and selected a few to read out loud, but we would ask to enter all these criteria shown on the next four slides into the record. First, 503.01, finally, number 6A conforms with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Comprehensive Master Plan. 503.02 addresses the design elements established in Article Four, Section 404 of this resolution. 4.404.03, open space buffers are provided adjacent to major drainage ways. 404.05, filing 6A works with the natural terrain and preserves existing drainage areas and vegetation. 404.08, signed construction documents and technical studies, including construction plans, traffic impact analysis, drainage report, and erosion control report have been found acceptable to the Engineering Department and are ready for approval. 503.06, filing 6A provides adequate drainage improvements to include stormwater conveyance systems to the Sterling Gulch interim pond and the unnamed tributary. 503.07, filing 6A provides adequate transportation improvements with improvements that will provide safe travel for all roadway users in Sterling Ranch. I'd also like to point out that we conform with Section 18, Water Supply Overlay District. 6A provides for a public wastewater collection and treatment system. And Andrea Cole with Dominion Water and Sanitation District is here to answer any questions. I would like to go ahead on the record and state that we, the applicant, are in agreement with all the conditions outlined in the staff report. Thank you, and we look forward to answering any of your questions.
Thank you, and that's nine conditions. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
Well, thank you for that excellent presentation, and it's certainly exciting to see you back. You know, one question for staff probably, and then another one for the applicant. I'll start with staff with regard to Engineering Services. As part of the June 24th, 2021 response, there were requested revisions to the plat exhibit regarding traffic impact study, Phase Two drainage report, road and storm construction plans, water and sanitary construction plans, and the guest report and plans. The response was that final approval of those documents would be accomplished prior to today's meeting. I just wanted to confirm, I heard that all of that had been received, right, and completed?
That is correct.
Thanks, Brett. And then the question for the applicant, so obviously the correspondence on June 22nd, 2021, from the Douglas County School District with regard to the fact that they don't object to approval of the plat, but they had the expectation that the owner obtained the rezoning for a school site and prompt conveyance to the school district, and that there'd be a mutually acceptable site dedication agreement with Douglas County School District. I just want to ensure the applicant had an opportunity to update the Board on any conversations and amendments for a school site.
If I could have Brock Smethills with Sterling Ranch answer that question?
That'd be great. Hi, Mr. Smethills.
How's it going?
Good.
Good afternoon. My last name is Smethills, S-M-E-T-H-I-L-S. My address is 8155 Pine River Avenue, Littleton, Colorado, 80125. Yes, so Susan Beckman and I in our office have met with Mr. Wise a couple times since that referral letter and are continuing to work forward on a site dedication agreement with Douglas County, and in addition are preparing to submit towards the end of this month or beginning of next month a rezoning application for a different area of Preliminary Plan Six that'd be rezoned to a school site at the request of the school district.
Great, okay, thank you, and thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions?
Not for me.
Commissioner Teal?
No questions, ma'am.
And I have no questions either, thank you. I'll open this up for citizen comment. Are there any citizens in the room who would like to address the Board? Hello, Dr. Dixon. If you'd like to start with your name, spell your last name and your address, please.
I'll wait till you get your exhibits, if that's okay.
So I have just been tendered what will be marked Exhibit Six for today's public hearing. Once again, that will be emailed to Commissioner Teal. If this is something he needs in front of him, and it sounds like that may be before we start, you might want to consider a five-minute break to make that happen.
It'd be helpful, but it may not be necessary.
Up to you.
Dr. Dixon, would you like to start, or would you like to wait until we get this to him?
I'll go ahead and start. I'm speaking on behalf of the Chatfield Community Association officially and unofficially many of the residents in the sort of the Sedalia area. As the state engineer referral pointed out, a water supply information summary sheet was not included in the referral material, so I'll use the previous sheet that Dominion submitted to the county, and this would be page one of your exhibit. I'd just like to quickly go through their water supply. We'll use the available numbers that they have on their sheet and not take into consideration systems losses and transportation losses. The first item, the Aurora 230, we agree that that is a renewable water supply. In the Aurora 250, actually only 191 acre feet is renewable. As the state engineer points out on page four of their referral, the Hock Hocking water is decreed groundwater. So there's 191 acre feet of renewable and 59 acre feet of groundwater. With regard to the Castle Rock 700 agreement, Dominion purchased 400 acre feet of groundwater and conveyed it to Castle Rock. Castle Rock required that Dominion drill two wells that would produce a minimum of 400 acre feet, so 400 acre feet will be pumped from the aquifers. Aquifers don't care who owns it, they just know that it's going to be pumped, and it will be for the benefit of Sterling Ranch, even if the water is not directly pumped into the pipes. The next line, Hock Hocking, as we stated before, the state engineer has pointed out that that is groundwater. We're not using Wise as a primary water supply because it does not meet state or county regulations as a dependable water supply. And if you look on the second page of the exhibit, this shows Wise supplies delivered this year so far. They've offered 2,226 acre feet, and they've only, Wise Partners have only taken 1,887, far below their actual deliveries that they had contracted for. And if you look at two of the previous years, the Wise water has not met their agreement either. Then we can go on down to the Cherokee Ranch. That's pretty well self-explanatory. We have not seen a well field analysis, so we don't know how much water is actually available. And the last is their reusable supply. Dominion has actually extended their wastewater agreement with Roxborough, so they do not have a wastewater treatment plant operational. Dominion stated last year that they were probably five to seven years out on building, and of course you've approved many plats since then. So we also don't see any movement toward getting reuse infrastructure installed, and we don't even know if it's feasible to do so. So there's no guarantee that they will ever get any of this reusable supply, and it certainly isn't in the works at this time, so we have not included that. So if you look at the summary of the renewable compared to the groundwater, their water supply is over 80% groundwater, which does not meet their 70% commitment of renewable. Unfortunately, as a citizen, we're powerless to protect our water resources, and that would also include our financial investments in our homes and our quality of life. We have to depend on you, the Board, to follow the regulations, the intended zoning to protect us particularly from the water. And we feel that if you pass this application with this water supply, we can only conclude that you don't care about regulations, because this clearly does not meet regulations. You don't care about the conditions of approval or the welfare of the citizens. And if you look on the last page, you can see the number of wells that are surrounding the Cherokee Ranch. Most of these are individual wells or small district wells. These will be impacted fairly quickly if this water supply is allowed to be passed. All the citizens, including the Sterling Ranch citizens, will be negatively impacted with this water supply. The citizens of Sterling Ranch are under the impression that they have a good renewable water supply, and according to this chart, they do not. Thank you.
Dr. Dixon, would you please leave your name and your address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jan Dixon, D-I-X-O-N, 4271 Mustang Circle, Sedalia.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other citizens in the room who would like to address the Board? Seeing no one come forward, Troy, is there anyone online?
I have no online comment.
Thank you. I will close citizen comment. Thank you, Jan. Would the applicant like to explain or answer? Oh, let me ask one other thing. Mr. Ingalls, we received a list of questions. Is it appropriate to have someone read those into the record, or what do you recommend?
I believe you're referring to Exhibit Five.
Correct.
Yes, there were some questions submitted by a citizen. If the Board wants those questions answered, it's appropriate to ask the applicant to do so. I think the applicant got a copy of Exhibit Five?
Okay, with that, if the applicant would like to come forward and answer the questions that have been presented, however you'd like to do that. Mr. Barney?
Do I need to state my name again?
No, just say who you are, so.
Right. Eric Barney, Sterling Ranch Development Company. I have received the questions sent about an hour ago. On number one, the burrowing owl survey, we actually just completed an additional burrowing owl survey on July 20th of this year for everything south of Titan Road, and no burrowing owl were found.
Thank you.
The second one, just reading through this, I'm going to try and understand what the question is, but there is a stockpile area located to the, on the south side of filing 6A. That stockpile area is for the whole corridor, that is for the Waterton Road project, which we're working on right now, and the Waterton Pond, all that corridor right there. Those have been approved by Douglas County staff. There is a height limit on those of 10 feet. Hopefully, that answers that question.
Thank you.
The third one, oh, on the wildlife corridor. If you guys recall, last year, we did do a PD amendment to update the wildlife corridor for the crossing of Waterton Road. The wildlife corridor is still there, it's a 300-foot in width minimum, which goes in between filing 6A and filing 6B and C, right through the middle of Preliminary Plan Six. So that was approved as a PD amendment last year.
Okay, if I could just, the second paragraph there says that the culvert in no way qualifies as any type of wildlife crossing.
That's correct. That is emergency overflow culvert that takes water in severe, severe storms.
Thank you for answering that one.
You're welcome. And number four, I believe that we have Cassie Slate, our Transportation Engineer, on the phone. I believe that she can answer item four.
Cassie, do you have, I'm sorry, do you have the question, or do you need it read to you, and would you also give your name?
Definitely. Yes, I have the question, I have the question in front of me, thank you, Commissioner Thomas. My name is Cassie Slate, and I'm with Fox Tuttle Transportation Group. My last name is S-L-A-D-E. My address is 1624 Market Street, Suite 202, and that's Denver, Colorado. The question is about regarding, you know, truck traffic and having them the equivalent to passenger cars in the traffic study. We don't do that in these high-level traffic studies because the percentage of heavy vehicles is not large enough to be accounted for. But what we do is in the models, we do put the percentage of trucks into those models, and so that they are accounted for to some degree. We also will add the grades. In this case, we added the grade on Titan Road so that we were accounting for slower acceleration of trucks. In the other study that the citizen is talking about was the temporary concrete batch plant, truck equivalents were done on that one because the majority of the vehicles were trucks. And so we did have to look at truck traffic and how it equated to passenger cars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, there was questions from Dr. Dixon about water.
Yes, and actually I would like Andrea Cole with Dominion Water and Sanitation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Apologize for the delay. My name is Andrea Cole, C-O-L-E, General Manager for Dominion Water and Sanitation District. We are located at 9250 East Castilla Avenue, Suite 315, in Greenwood Village, Colorado. And thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to provide information to address Dr. Dixon's comments related to Dominion's availability of water supplies as well as wastewater conveyance and treatment. I have a brief I have a brief presentation that I hope will help clarify some of the questions raised today by Dr. Dixon. Some of these slides, I think, that you have seen before in the past, but I have also provided some additional information to help clarify our commitment and our available water supplies. So, what I would like to highlight on this slide is two, we have both a blue and the green. So, as of February 2021, Dominion has secured a total supply of 2,000 acre-feet-a-year of water. Now, that water is committed to the full build-out of Sterling Ranch, and that is through a fully authorized and executed will-serv agreement that we have with Sterling Ranch, as well as to the Chatfield Valley Framework and Leveres. And why that is separated out on this is while there are approximately 107 homes within Leveres that qualify for the Chatfield Valley Framework, we have independently reached out to Leveres to provide a more robust solution to address their challenges for water supply. What you see here in the green is the current demands that Sterling Ranch has requested to meet our commitments. And that is a total of 1,462.6 because engineers like accuracy, acre-feet-per-year of water, to have available to meet our commitments. And I think this is a new graph that you have not seen, and I think really helps illustrate how Dominion has secured water supply as Sterling Ranch has grown. And so, what you see on here, and I will address, and if I forget some, please remind me. But I will try to address the majority of Dr. Dixon's questions with this slide. So, what you see here is, again, as Sterling Ranch has grown through each of the filings and preliminary plans, starting with 1 through 6, which is where we are here today, you can see that Dominion has secured water supplies to deliver those reliable and renewable supplies to Sterling Ranch, starting with the Aurora 230 agreement, then moving to the Aurora 250. Now, both of these are contractual agreements with the city of Aurora, and as such, they meet Douglas County requirements of being renewable in nature. In addition, we have secured an agreement with Castle Rock, and it is referred to as the FSC-IGA 700. And I know there was some concerns raised by Dr. Dixon on that water supply and whether parts of that is renewable or groundwater in nature. The 700 is part of Dominion's allotment to the full 1,325 acre-feet that we have as part of WISE. What we have asked Castle Rock, and Castle Rock has agreed to, is to retime those deliveries of WISE through their system. Now, that addresses the interruptible nature of WISE. We all recognize that that is an interruptible water supply in nature, and so, that's what we have asked Castle Rock to do, is to retime those flows through their system to provide buffer and to allow Castle Rock to do that and to continue to meet their demands for their residents, we provided and drilled the wells. Again, to firm that water and to also allow them to retime. Now, the Hawk Hocking water is not shown on here at this time, but that water source, while it is groundwater, is considered renewable in nature by the state. What you do see in here is the WISE, the remaining WISE allotment for Dominion, which is 625. Again, our total allotment from WISE is 1,325 acre-feet. 625 acre-feet of that is still within our purview and control. As part of that, again, with WISE being interruptible in nature, we have secured groundwater in Cherokee Ranch under a conservation easement to firm those water deliveries through the WISE system. And in addition, we have additional groundwater supplies that will be used in the amount of 275 acre-feet per year of Cherokee waters, and I apologize, that is really hard to read on the purple, that will be available to meet our full commitments, again, to Sterling Ranch through build-out as well as the Chatfield Valley Framework and Leveres. The other thing that I would like to draw your attention to and may help address some questions by Dr. Dixon regarding deliveries of WISE, and I will offer that I can only represent and provide information for Dominion and not the full WISE partnership. And the graph that Dr. Dixon provided is for the full WISE partnership. This black dotted line on here is current demands for Sterling Ranch. Now, there's a reason why there's a gap here. One is due to occupation. While Sterling Ranch has sold and is in the process of constructing homes, those homes are not occupied yet, so therefore, they're not using water. Once those homes become occupied, you will see that this gap will close between what is being used and what is needed to meet those demands. In addition, you're also seeing the value and the efforts of Sterling Ranch and the CAB in doing effective conservation and demand management. And so, you're seeing that number lower than anticipated. I know this was not a question that Dr. Dixon brought today to the board, but I do know that this was a question that was brought up previously. So, I would like to touch a little bit more detail on the wastewater system that Dominion currently has. We have extended our contract agreement with Roxborough Water and Sanitation District to continue to convey wastewater through the existing force main to the South Platte Renew Wastewater Treatment Facility. And for those, South Platte Renew is their new branded name. It's by cities, Littleton, Inglewood, whatever you're used to calling that facility. That facility, as many know, is oversized in nature and has more than enough capacity to treat the wastewater flows that are being conveyed. In addition, Dominion continues to advance the Chatfield Basin Water Reclamation Facility. So, this was a facility that Dominion has acquired, and we are under contract with the Progressive Design Build Team of Maltz and Corolo to work through the design efforts. We have been, we have 30% design from them. We are in the process of reviewing that. What we're looking at and to continue these efforts is to install a temporary pilot plant at that location. And the purpose of this is to test the MBR treatment process, which is an advanced and well-recognized and well-known wastewater treatment process. But we want to test its effectiveness at the site and also be able to collect the affluent quality so that we can have that information for CDPHG as well as other entities interested as we are discharging upstream of Chatfield reservoir. In addition, once this pilot test has been successfully completed and we have captured this data, we will file a site application with CDPHG. Dominion is committed to constructing a new facility at the Chatfield Basin Water Reclamation Facility utilizing that MBR technology, and it will have a treatment capacity between 0.8 to 1.2 million gallons a day. And the reason for this is partially due to the capacity of the MBRs, and they don't come in equal increments. They don't come in 1 MGD and 2 MGD capsules. They come in smaller increments, and so, that's why there's a difference there. What I would also like to show, and this is just basically graphic of what I just walked through, but we have an existing lift station here at Titan Road. We have this existing force main. We have an existing lift station at Willow Creek. We have an existing line that comes over to the Roxborough Lift Station, which, again, we have extended those agreements with Roxborough. And that wastewater is conveyed through the force main to the South Platte Renew facility. In the future, we will have constructed a wastewater treatment plant here, again, to that 0.8 or 1.2 MGD capacity. And finally, I think, oops, the map's out there.
Thank you.
I would like to convey also, just kind of going back, because I believe this was a question that I probably didn't address thoroughly, the WISE subscription. Currently, as you can see, our demands are here, and so, we have been utilizing the Aurora 230 and 250 as well as the bridge agreement that we have with Aurora of 570 acre-feet of water. Those waters are conveyed to Dominion Water and Sanitation District on our west side, whereas WISE would come from the east side. Thank you.
Any additional questions or deliberation from the board?
Well, I appreciate the response from Dominion and from the applicant with regard to the questions and comments raised by Dr. Dixon. I think it's always valuable to hear from the citizens. We absolutely care and are deeply concerned about the requirements and commitments from all parties to these particular applications. So, I want to make sure that that's clear for both Dr. Dixon and any of those listening or here in the room. I suppose what's challenging for us in this position is when the factual information presented in citizen comment is not the same as the factual information provided by the applicant. And so, I guess what I heard from Dominion would satisfy the requirements under 18A and our approval criteria, but I guess this question is directed to staff. Can you confirm that the information we received just now from Dominion is accurate?
This is Jeanette Baer for staff. The, all the Aurora water agreements and that supply was previously reviewed and approved by the board for filings 1 through 5. Filing 6 brings on that Cherokee groundwater, which the applicants have indicated can firm additional WISE supplies. The water consultant reviewed the information provided with the preliminary plan, and we believe it does meet the requirements set forth in the existing water appeal for Sterling Ranch. The issue of the 70/30 split, that's something that will be accomplished over the life of the project. It's not a static number at one point in time. Certainly, we want to evaluate that percentage as the project moves along. But, you know, once more of a conjunctive use system is in place, and you've got the return flows from the wastewater treatment plant, everything that we've been provided indicates that they will be able to meet that 70/30. But that is a commitment, and that is something we will track throughout time for the project.
Okay, well, let me get more granular then on that specific issue. I mean, an indication was made by Dr. Dixon that that 70/30 split was a requirement. Is that, and maybe that's a question for legal, is that a requirement for our approval for today's purposes?
Well, my understanding is that was a commitment that was made on the record at the time the PD was approved. It isn't actually in the current water appeal. With the water appeal amendment that will be coming forward to you, I think, in the next month or so, that 70/30 split is memorialized for the first time in that agreement. That'll be something that you will consider. But, again, as represented in the hearing, I believe that was kind of an in-state requirement that the project, at the end of the day, would have 70% renewable, 30% groundwater. And, you know, as such, at this point in time, it's not a specific requirement for this application, that they be at 70/30 this particular minute. A lot of that WISE water is considered renewable, and when we looked at the WISE water and that agreement with Castle Rock, we actually came up with an estimate over that 10-year average that they delivered the WISE supplies, how much of the project, how much of that water would really be considered renewable. And I want to say it was something like 60%. Can't remember right off my head, off the top of my head. But I think at this point, we believe they meet all the criteria of the water appeal and the intent of that provision that was expressed on.
Okay, that's helpful, Jeanette.
I don't know if you have anything else to add on that.
I don't know if it's much to add, but with the board's permission, I'll state that a little bit differently for the record, Lance Ingles, County Attorney. The applicant did initially commit to a 70/30 split of renewable water over time. How that is to be interpreted has been a question for the board and the applicant over that period of time. And what has generally been accepted is so long as the applicant is moving towards that goal and seems on target for that goal, no individual application necessarily fails to comply with the 70/30 split. It is, as Jeanette stated, an end goal at the end of this project, the target, which was accepted by the board, so it is a condition of approval. But the target is a 70/30 split of renewable water to non-renewable water. But whether it meets that criteria, any application is really an individual decision for the board with each application. But, again, the way it's been interpreted over time is that is a goal for the end of the project, not necessarily for each application.
Okay, that's helpful. I think it's important to get to that nuance because, you know, when we receive commentary, I think we need to be very specific about what the requirements are and the timing associated with that. And what I heard today, both from staff and from legal, is that that is part of the commitment, that is part of the requirement, but it is not static. It is over time and to be progressed toward. I also just wanted to reflect on the staff comments in the packet for today's application. And, again, I think it's pretty clear that, let's see here, yeah, that the water supplies are provided through the IGAs with the city of Aurora and the town of Castle Rock. And then Dominion entered into that IGA with the town of Castle Rock, securing Dominion's purchase of up to 3,569 acre-feet per year of Denver Basin groundwater rights associated with Cherokee Ranch. And all of those supplies were evaluated by staff and found to meet applicable approval criteria at the time of preliminary plan. So, I guess I'm struggling, and it's, you know, I think part of an ongoing challenge that we've had for a variety of issues in this room associated with facts. I think we need to have accurate information. I mean, just this week, we were dealing with, you know, a masking conversation where there's still confusion among the public around the fact that 100%, nearly 100% of all adults have had access to the vaccine. And so, therefore, masking requirements for anybody seem somewhat nonsensical, and we've yet to receive scientific evidence to support that ongoing requirement. So, you know, facts matter. I appreciate staff and legal clarifying that. And I believe, based upon what I've heard today, I will be in favor of the application.
Thank you. Commissioner Lane, if I could also add, in the packet, starting on 209, is a letter from the State Engineers Office. And on page 213, it says, "Our opinion," it says, "Our opinion that the water supply is adequate is based on our determination that the amount of water required annually to serve the subdivision is currently physically available based on Castle Rock's water supply availability upstream of the Sterling Ranch filing 6A." So, that further supports my belief in this opinion that the water is available. Commissioner Teal, do you have anything else?
No, I don't think so. I mean, I think you guys touched.
I mean, I think you guys touched, pardon me, Commissioner, I think you and Commissioner Layden touched on the points that I was going to make. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other deliberation, the first matter is the SIA IGA on a motion.
So I will make a motion to approve a subdivision improvements agreement and intergovernmental agreement for Sterling Ranch filing number 6A-Douglas County Project File DV 2021-179.
Second.
There's a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, and that motion carries.
Madam Chair, if it pleases the board, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Sterling Ranch filing number 6A, final plat with nine conditions, as presented, project file SB 2021-020.
Second.
Have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, and that motion carries as well. We have one final item on today's agenda. It is for the public hearing, and it is the presentation of a preliminary plan. This is a proposed district boundary map concerning the redistricting plan for Douglas County Commissioner districts pursuant to CRS 3010-306. Mr. Ingalls for staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item is being brought to the board because from time to time, the board is required to reset the county commissioner districts to be in compliance with state statute. Historically, that requirement has been that the districts be roughly equal in size in terms of population. Now that is better defined based on legislation that just got passed this last go-round. But currently, we are probably not in compliance with the requirement that the three commissioner districts be roughly equal in size. So now the requirement is roughly equal in size means no greater than 5% deviation between the largest and the smallest. As the board is aware, but the public that is attending may or may not be, the board has had more than one work session to talk about possible ways to kind of correct the lines of these districts. And up on your screen is a map of potential district changes that is, I believe, acceptable to the board, at least to bring forward today. Now, the requirement is that you have this public hearing today, that you accept any public comment that is offered, and at least 30 days from now, you can then have a final public hearing or final meeting and take final action on the district boundary changes. So today is what is proposed. It is very much preliminary, but you have a responsibility to accept any public testimony that may be offered. I know that between the original drawing of these maps and between then and today, the projected population of these three districts changed slightly. That change was based on census data that the state received roughly a week ago, maybe just over a week ago. So the estimated populations of the three draft districts has been updated. It is still within the statutory deviation that's allowed for differences in population size, but it is slightly more than it was on the initial maps based on solely on county data. So can I answer any questions about the process, where we are today, or the map that's being displayed for your consideration?
Questions? Commissioner Teal.
I have no questions.
Mr. Ingalls, so if we accept this plan today, as I understand it, we will finalize this on September 28th at another public hearing. What is the process in between now and then if the public realizes what we've done today and wants to be involved? What does that look like?
Well, it looks like whatever the board decides it should look like. We talk from time to time about matters that are quasi-judicial and limited to the record that's presented to you at those hearings. This is not a quasi-judicial matter. So this is a legislative matter. The board has absolute discretion on what the boundaries of the final districts look like, so long as it complies with the limitations of statute. So between this public hearing and September 28th, which would be the date of final decision on this matter, you can accept whatever comments you want. The three of you can accept whatever commentary you want individually or collectively. It's probably a best practice to at least share that information with each other, but you are not limited in the information you can receive and that you can consider between now and September 28th, where it's anticipated you would make a final decision.
So we won't be having any open houses or any other opportunities for people to come and speak to the three of us, but should people learn about this and want to make comments, they could email us, email the board, contact the commissioners, however they would like to, to provide their input? Is that what you're saying?
I think that's right. There's nothing prohibiting the board from scheduling an open house, but really, this public hearing today has been the chance for people to show up should they want to. That doesn't mean they're precluded from letting you know what they think about the draft boundaries, but if we go through additional processes, it's up to the board. The only required process is you cannot finalize this for at least 30 days. That's why this is scheduled for your final meetings in September. I say meetings rather than public hearing, because there is some discretion, whether this would go on the 130 business meeting or the 230 public hearing. That meeting is not required to be a public hearing, but the board has discretion there as well.
Thank you. Did my question raise any comments from either one of you? Commissioner Teal?
You know, the only comment that comes to mind from your question, the answer from the attorney, would be, you know, listen, I welcome any and all comments. You know, we just completed a round of public comments at the state level, commenting to the redistrict commission on legislative as well as congressional maps. And the reality is, is all three districts, the public should know that they are, the three of us, as our time comes for reelection or in selecting a new member to be here on the board, these are still at-large elections for the seats on the Board of County Commissioners. These are really origin districts, very much unlike what we see at the congressional level and definitely what we see at the legislative level. So, yeah, Commissioner Thomas, I would just like to everyone to know that I very much welcome any comments and all comments to be brought in before we do make that final decision in, at our second meeting.
Thank you.
One thing I'll add, I just had time to look over my shoulder at the map that's displayed. While the boundaries haven't changed, the population numbers you are looking at were the county's estimated population before the census data was received. So if the board would prefer, I can read in the populations as that has changed. Again, this is within the deviation that is allowed. For District 3, it would be the smallest district based on the population changes at 117,562. District 1 would have 120,408, and District 2 would have 120,073. Again, this is based on the state's data and data on which we must rely now by statute, but all three districts have gone down in size based on that data, and District 3 would be slightly smaller than Districts 1 and 2, but well within the 5% deviation that's allowed.
Thank you for that information. I'm going to open this up to public comment. Are there any citizens in the room who would like to address the board on this topic? Seeing the answer is no, Troy, is there anyone online?
No online comments.
I'll bring it back to the board then for an acceptance in the form of a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the presentation of preliminary plan, proposed district boundary map concerning the redistricting plan for Douglas County Commissioner districts pursuant to CRS 3010-306 at Sequoia. And actually, I will amend my motion in the following way. So I'm going to make a motion to accept the preliminary plan, proposed district boundary map concerning the redistricting plan for Douglas County Commissioner districts pursuant to CRS 3010-306 at Sequoia, and schedule final action on September 28th, 2021.
I will second.
There's a first and a second, and I'll just explain what happened. We had one motion, and then on the break, the county attorney realized the motion needed to be changed. So Commissioner Layden read originally what he had been provided, and then I slid over to him the updated one, so I, that's on me. So thank you. There's a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 And that motion carries. Thank you. That concludes today's land use and public hearing. The next meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 14th at 2:30 in the afternoon. Thank you.